Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the force staff in need for the town of Hingham from March 5, 2019. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I have taken a motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
A favor.
Aye.
My public comment, hearing none. I take a discussion on a better bus project. It's my understanding that Michelle's going to...
If we could, can we knock that to the second?
Oh.
After the budget process, just because I have Sue Nickerson here to work with us.
I misunderstood.
No, my bad.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get into the budget discussion. As you may recall, we had a series of department heads. One of Tom and Michelle present their budget, budgets for the upcoming year. So at this point, we're going to have a discussion and potential vote on the position that the board takes, so.
Okay, thank you. If I could call Sue Nickerson, Town Accountant, and join me. We have Sue until about eight o'clock. She has to get over to AdCom. So that's, thank you for taking this item first.
Sure.
Okay, I think the easiest way to go through this, I have a series of, as we all know, additional requests every year. And after some, you know, understanding the town's budgetary constraints and further discussion, I've identified a couple that might be able to be postponed till future years or as you guys obviously see fit. But if I could walk through my recommendations, I think if you start with, you want to do the forecast first?
Just, it would help me to know where we are.
Set the stage, that's a good idea.
If you wouldn't mind, there's a lot of numbers floating around in, in the town.
Sure. That's fair. Okay. Of course, I opened up to the log page. There it is. Thank you. Okay, so the forecast, we have a new version, version 1.3, that was released. We sent it out to the forecast team earlier today. The school department got it. It has a couple of, I think relatively minor changes, but changes that we need to identify. So in the, on the revenue side, the increased, the first, the only real increase to new revenue, I guess there were two, but the one increase to new revenue was on the local receipts and in specifically the investment income line. We moved that up by $74,000, $74,030 to be exact. What that did is that allowed us to bring our total threshold of local receipts to 95% over prior year, which had been our traditional safe zone. We were a little bit below that prior, and I felt that it was acceptable to move that up to 95%. So we added $74,000 in forecasted revenue. And then we added, Article H, the meals tax stabilization, will be $125,000. And we added that to the stabilization fund line under the other revenue. And that brings, all right, so those are the, those are the revenue changes. The expense changes are that John, the school department, John and Dot, had presented a new school department budget on the 25th, I think it was, right? And so we just, we inserted that number into the, into the expenses side for the school department. We, we received notice, a happy, a happy email we got from the GIC, that they had told us prior that they thought they were going to be cutting rates to three point, originally three point three.
Three point three, yes.
Three point three percent over last year. They've now reduced that to three point...
Nope, it was still three point three. It's just the different plans. Some plans got 0% increase, some got, one of them got 12% increase. So overall, it was a three, three point three. But what I did was, I took the March bill.
Yep.
And allocated it to the, to the number of people who are on each plan.
Okay.
And we saved...
A little bit of a deeper dive.
We saved $151,000 by doing it that way.
Okay.
And then the only other change was that the capital outlay recommendation was actually $7,751 higher than their, than their allot, so.
Slap that.
But we wanted to make sure that everyone recognizes what the changes are in the forecast document.
Thank you.
So, table is now set. Oh, so yeah, so the total deficit now lands at $726,640.
Thank you.
That's where, that's where we're starting tonight.
Okay.
Okay, now, if we go back to this sheet that has little blue numbers on the right side, I can walk you through my recommended changes to my original recommended additions list. So starting with the very first line, which is the Sleckman's budget, I had originally recommended $40,000 for recording clerks. Michelle and I did a little bit of a deeper dive on that, identified some critical departments that need that, that, that level of effort, and we're down to about six departments that we think we can do this with in year one. And that brought the total cost of this program from $40,000 down to $13,000. It was actually $10,800, but we are anticipating the need for potentially more meetings than last year. And if that happens, we wanted to have a budget, so I built in a 20% contingency on that. So that's how we get to that $13,000 number.
Okay. I didn't put that in blue, sorry.
So, as you're reading this, the, my original recommendation was $386,391. I'm now recommending as an additional request 13, so if you're going to take this, this recommendation, the new recommendation for the payroll, or, yeah, for payroll would be $399, $391, bringing the total for that department to 458, 531.
And just for clarity, the forecast right now reflects a $40,000 increase.
All additional, yes.
So if we recommend, if, if we adopt your recommendation, it takes the, it takes the total deficit down by 27?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and that will be true for each of these points.
Thank you.
Right, so this one needed to be in blue. Okay. So the reserve fund, again, I am recommending $31,500. That was my original recommendation, and that is still valid, in the full amount. And that brings it up to be consistent with their financial policy. The information technology is another priority item that I've identified as part of one of my additional requests. This brings our part-time technician up to a full-time position. And that's a position that's desperately needed, so I would ask that that not be cut. And that would bring the payroll line from $101,866 to $201,46, which, again, it already is at in the, in the forecast.
So, Tom, that was originally $23,975?
Yes, it was.
I'm just looking back at...
Yep.
Unfortunately, some of that, the school department is going to take because they reimburse IT, so I put the net for, for additionals for the town side.
For the town side.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they, they take up, what is it, 20%? They pay, they help with 20%, I think, of the cost, because they help them as well.
Thank you.
Okay, the assessors line, this is, this is an interesting one, so I'm, you know, recommending we change the payroll from $262,069 to $281,069, $19,000. But that's simply coming off the, the pre-existing expense line. So it's really a net, a zero net gain there, so I don't really consider that much of a, of a give. All right, on the next page, down to legal services. So I had recommended $25,000 addition to the legal services budget. This is an annual structural deficit that the town of Hingham has to deal with every year. This was an effort at trying to correct the structural deficit over time. And, you know, in tight years, I guess, these types of efforts become more difficult. So I'm suggesting that if it needs to be cut, that's less impactful than, for instance, an IT, an IT person. But still a structural deficit that will have to be dealt with. Okay, the elections line, I'm, I had recommended $16,642 in addition to payroll and $3,550 in addition for expenses for that department. Again, that was an effort at trying to level off the elections, the annual elections budget for that department. They fluctuate greatly, up 50% one year, down 50% the next year, just because of the number of elections that come up. And the intent was to turn back what we don't use. There's no reason that that has to happen. We can continue to do what we've been doing, which is, on years that she had surprise elections or elections that she didn't anticipate, they have to be paid for. We come to, we come for a reserve fund transfer. So again, that's an acceptable cut from my original additional request. The conservation commission, we had, this $10,000 request was to compensate a retiring personnel that has retired earlier than anticipated and will not be employed in FY20, so there's no reason. So that one is formally withdrawn. There's no reason to fund that. The police department, their payroll, their payroll, I would, had originally recommended $5,000, $5,711,45. My additional request was for $46,577, bringing the total to $57,57622. I'm still recommending that. And the same with the expenses was $368,750. I'm recommending an addition of $17,000 for a total on expenses of $385,750. That brings the total of the department to $6,143,372. That was in large part for, the expense line was for the assessment centers that they're doing now. What was the other line?
Crossing Guards.
Promotional testing.
No, the Crossing Guards was the salary line.
Yep.
And then there was, there was another...
Promotional testing.
The promotional testing with the, and the academy before, on the expenses side.
And that was actually lower than what Glenn, Glenn had requested in amount, and you, you cut that back.
Yes, I cut his overtime by $10,000. He has additional, his overtime request by $10,000, that's right. As he has more officers this year, hopefully the overtime needs are a little bit lower. The fire department, they had, I had originally requested an additional $32,000, in essence for overtime to cover their, their staffing, for removing the call boxes from all of the, wherever they exist still. They're outdated and they need to come down. If they're, just so everyone knows, I believe, the story is, if they're on a pole, they have to be functional. We can't leave that there and then have somebody pull it, thinking they're getting a service and not get it. So it's an outdated technology. We're trying to remove them, and we've been doing so methodically, but there are still several left that we take off with using our firefighters on overtime to remove those off the poles. Anyway, that work still needs to be done, but I'm suggesting that that could be cut if needed. The harbor master, I was requesting an additional $11,726 for their expense line, and we've, you know, the harbor master has moved over to their new, their new offices in the MBTA's intermodal center at the shipyard. So this is their rent, that's their, their rent. That at the time, when we first initiated the budget, it wasn't, we didn't have that negotiated, but that's obviously done now, and that request is necessary to pay the rent. So I can't cut that one, or I'd recommend that you don't cut that one. Town engineering, so last year, well, I'll walk through it. Their payroll expenses were, I'm recommending an additional $3,500 to their payroll line, bringing the total to $282,313. Last year, I recommended this amount. He's asked, and, he asked last year and this year for $7,000. Last year, I reduced it to $3,500, and it got cut by AdCom. I'm, so this year, I'm recommending $3,500 again. He does have overtime needs, he and his department, not he, but his department, Harry Sylvester and Tom Mullenari, are regularly, regularly asked to go to night meetings, that we need them to be at. And this is a line item to cover that cost. It's half of what he asked for. It's an attempt to fill, in essence, a structural deficit in that department, and, and I think it's warranted. The snow and ice, so the snow removal budget, this is another structural deficit item that the town of Hingham deals with every year. I was recommending that we increase that budget by $50,000. Again, like the legal budget, I'm recognizing that, you know, some years are tighter than others, and fiscal, you know, pressures being what they are, it'd be nice to get this, but to true up that account, but if that can't happen this year, hopefully it can happen in future years. So if you jump ahead, I think that's, the last page has another structural deficit identified. This is the workers' comp line, same story, same story as snow and ice, and same story as legal. This is a structural deficit we have to deal with every year. We're always backfilling using reserve fund transfers and, and the like, and, you know, it needs to get corrected at some point. I recommended originally $50,000 for it, and, again, recognizing the pressures this year, maybe this isn't the year. The problem is, I don't know when will be the year, but this is, this is where we're at. So I'm suggesting that that is also an acceptable cut from my original recommendations. So that was my little worksheet. Okay, so if you go to this page, this worksheet shows the, how we got to our $726,640 deficit that I outlined when we reviewed the forecast. And if you look down, down at the bottom of the section, the TA acceptable cuts is listed at $214,192. That's what I just outlined for you. So what I would suggest to you is, you know, that's a difficult cut, it's a deep cut, but it's, in an effort to work towards a balanced budget, maybe that's what has to happen. The other, the only other item that I have on this sheet is the only item that I know, which is the ACES report for the school department's budget, which was an additional decrease of $379,232. And I believe AdCom will be taking that up, but that's, that's what's out there right now. So if you were to reduce my, my budget request by the $214,192, as well as the, and you took the ACES recommended reduction of the school department budget, the further reduction of $379,232, you end up with a total existing deficit at this point of $133,216. And, you know, there are several different ideas on probably on how to get to that number, so. Do your thing.
So, what?
Do your thing.
So I was looking at this, I was looking at this a little bit today to try to get my, Tom, this is super helpful, and in particular, this worksheet that kind of tracks from one forecast to another, just like, let's keep doing this because there's a lot of paper, there are a lot of versions, and it really helps. I just, I was just looking at some numbers that, that might, that were kind of, as I was looking at the budget. So I actually went back to Tom's presentation from December, and if you look at it, what Tom was requesting was, Tom was basically requesting, the increase was about $1.2 million overall in the whole budget, and about $800,000 of it was the level services increase. That was less than 3%, and that was primarily, you know, contractual stuff. There were also some mandates, things like the veterans' benefits, the reserve fund that he mentioned, which is in sync with the financial policy, the Hulse-Suer intermunicipal agreement. And then, as Tom pointed out, he had those couple of things for $75,000 that are structural deficits, and look, you know, Karen, you and I have been at this for a long time. Every year, every year, we don't pay our bills, and we go, because we want to buy new stuff. And I like new stuff as much as everybody else. But, you know, to me, this, this year, last year, these were the years where we had the least amount of fiscal pressure. These are the years that, you know, if, if we really wanted to be honest, we would, we would true those things up. I worry that the longer we kick that down the can, the bigger the number gets. And I, you know, to me, we just kind of continue to kid ourselves on that, and I'm not, I'm not optimistic that if we don't do that, like this year, I just don't know when, when will be a good time, because I think we've, we've all experienced times when, when the fiscal picture is, is tighter. And, you know, frankly, $25,000 on a $108 million budget, it just, you know, I don't feel like I'm doing my fiduciary responsibility to the town when, when I kind of let that go. And I say that, understanding exactly where you're coming from, I get it. But I would also point out that, Tom, I'm just looking at my numbers here, in the initial request, Tom actually, you had a lot of requests from department heads, and...
Like you made a cut of them?
You made, you made a bunch of cuts, and I think, I'm not, I'm not seeing where the number is, but I think you, you took, you, you were recommended to us about two-thirds of, of what the department has asked for. And, again, if you look at this sheet, Tom's additional requests originally were $200,000. Now that he's pared it back, Tom's additional requests are $100,000. So, like, let's just think about that. On a $100 million budget, we're asking for $100,000 to make sure that people can kind of do their jobs. And the overtime is not, the overtime is not discretionary, it's not extra. Overtime is a way that we deal with staffing. And I guess I look at this, and I, I appreciate the work that you've done. To me, I don't think it's a lot to ask for $100,000 to do a little bit more on a $108 million budget. And frankly, I think that if, if this budget were cut by more than $100,000, we will be contracting services. We absolutely will be contracting services, and in this year, that's not necessary. I, I really don't think we need to contract services. I don't think we can all do the extras that we'd like to do. As I look at the school budget, and Dave Anderson sent me a note with, that I think I put in folders with the ACES recommendation, the school budget proposed increase, and I think these numbers changed a little, started out at $2.9 million. And if I read the documents right, about 1.9 of it was needed, just to kind of keep things going, and there was about $1 million in new things. And, and, yeah, about a million, a million dollars of, of kind of new things. So I guess I'm looking at it and saying, if, if we adopt your recommendations, the municipal budget is left with $100,000 of new things, and if we adopt the ACES number, I think that leaves the, the education budget with $600,000 of new things. And, you know, I, personally, that doesn't feel as balanced to me as I'd like, but I can't see, given where we are right now, I, I wouldn't see cutting back anymore on the municipal budget. I think there's, I think there are some equity issues here with respect to, I think as a town, we share the gain and we share the pain. And that's kind of how I'm looking at it.
So our path to cover, first of all, again, great job, and great job that the schools are here in force, really great job on your budgeting as well. I mean, as Mary said, to get to this stage and to be $133,000, what?
No.
Oh, 100, 100...
I was just kicking out loud.
You know, to be $133,000 away from a balanced budget, I think, shows a tremendous amount of work by, by everybody in this room. But it's always the painful part of getting it over the finish line, to, to present a balanced budget to town meeting, because, you know, we don't have the luxury of kicking that can down the road. We have the responsibility of demonstrating to the town that we can, we can pay our bills. So, you know, like you, I guess, like you, I'm frustrated with the underfunding, the chronic underfunding of workers' comp, legal, and DPW. And I, you know, I think it's a, it's an easy target to cut because it doesn't look very painful now, but it is a bill that's going to come due, and, you know, at some point, I think we need to be honest with ourselves about what it costs to, you know, to run these various aspects of the town. And, you know, I, I draw comfort from the fact that typically, there's money that falls to the bottom line after the close of the fiscal year, so FY19 will, you know, potentially generate some savings that, again, brings us closer to this, making up this 133, but it's not money we can count, right? It's not money we have in our pocket at the moment, or it's not money that's represented in the forecast. So, you know, it's that, one of the questions I guess I had from you is, in your meetings with department heads, and in your assessment of where you stand in the, in the budgetary process for the current fiscal year, do you see or anticipate savings on the one hand, or, you know, reserve fund transfer requests on the other hand? Like, where do you get that?
Yeah, I think every year, we trend towards about 1% returns from our, from our department.
It's pretty tight budgeting.
It's pretty tight budgeting. We're 99, said another way, right? We're not budgeting to a 99% level of accuracy. So, but that, that is also a reality, that that will probably occur. Sue does the, the quarterly department assessments, so she might be better.
I know of legal, workers' comp.
You're not helping me, Sue? That's not what I wanted.
And unemployment, and maybe fire. I know we'll go for reserve fund transfers already.
Okay.
All of those, obviously the three big structural deficits, we anticipate every year, until we fix them, that's going to happen. The fire, overtime, we knew as well going into this year, because of their, they're, they're so short-staffed, that's going to hopefully repair itself as we staff up this coming year.
Yep.
But it's not going to affect, it's not going to be in time for FY20's relief. It'll be 21's relief.
Yep. So I guess, you know, being honest with ourselves about what those obligations are going to be in FY20 means that we spend less on new stuff, whether it's for the schools or the town, in, in, in the, in this current budget cycle. Or, we, we cut this back, again, knowing, knowing full well that we're going to have that expense in FY20, we're going to have to come up, you know, with the money somewhere, but we can get the budget that we want, that we all want, frankly, today. And I, I just, like Mary said, I struggle with that as the steward of the town recommending the budget to town meeting, when I, when I know that these are bills that are going to come due. So one of the questions, I guess, and you're much better at this, Mary, than I am, is, you know, what are, what are our pathways to get to the, to cover the 133, you know, moving a capital expenditure, cutting capital? Capital isn't reflected here. You know, I just jotted through the, the capital plan that we heard the other night, trying to, you know, find some things to circle, and it's really hard when it's, you know, information technology that we've been told by our, our audit team that we need to upgrade, when it's bulletproof vests, you know, when it's...
You're not cutting those.
No, but I mean, that's right, that's, we're not, we're not frivolously spending capital dollars either, but I'm just wondering whether, so I did have a question for, maybe for John, if I could ask it, and that is, the Plymouth River Playground, I know you got some CPC funds, I'm assuming this $80,000 for AAB compliance is net of whatever the CPC grant is?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So no luck there?
No, sorry.
Okay. So...
Karen, one thing we've, I mean, you may remember from your AdCom days, that there were a couple of years where we had, for example, some surplus money in the current fiscal year. So like, if you look at your forecast right now, you see that, that, you know, the, the new growth came in higher after the budget settled, and so we have, you know, $400,000 of surplus this year as well. I mean, I know, a couple, you know, in a couple of years on AdCom, what we've done... I mean, I know, you know, in a couple of years on AdCom, what we've done is to choose one or two capital projects that we could accelerate and make that purchase before the fiscal year closes. And so it's, it's really not, you know, we're not cutting anything. It's just, it's a slight timing issue. And, you know, I think, again, on a $108 million budget, we're talking $100,000. I mean, if this were a million dollars, I...
It's a different conversation.
It would be a different conversation. But for $133,000, you know, that's, that's a path that, that, you know, that maintains everything. And it, you know, what it kind of relies on is that there's some extra revenue. I mean, I think we also have to recognize that, you know, while all our budgets are fluid, the school budget is particularly fluid. And I think it's been the experience over the last several years, that between now and the end of the fiscal year, there continue to be personnel changes. Those are, those are a little more difficult to predict. And that, you know, the, the school budget's in a unique position where if, if there's movement in that budget, it creates additional budget capacity. Now, on the flip side, if, if, you know, something, something can happen on the other end of that. But I think over the last several years, that's, you know, that's kind of another path. Looking at a $400,000 deficit, I mean, excuse me, surplus right now in '19, that...
With no reserve fund transfers?
Yeah. I just want to caution you, that 400 is, the forecast is projected, those are not actual numbers. So all the expenses are just budget numbers.
Yep.
They're not actual numbers.
And I guess where we kind of are is that, you know, you've got, so we've got our reserve fund. Sue, what's the, in terms of reserve fund transfers this year, we have, we have 550 in the budget and...
We're done too.
We've only had, it's, they've been small, right? So, so we got, we got a couple of moving parts. We've got still a pretty healthy reserve fund right now in the current year. As Tom mentioned, we often have budget surpluses at the end of the year. So, you know, we, we have some savings in one department, and that helps offset something else. I'd also point out that we have a very healthy unassigned fund balance. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, I think that, you know, we look at it and say, our unassigned fund balance is well above the threshold in our financial policy. We don't, we don't want to be silly with it. But I think what it means to me is that we can sometimes take a little bit of a risk with the revenue because we've got a backstop. And again, we're talking about $133,000 backstops. So I...
I guess I'd rather not make an outright, you know, an outright transfer from fund balance. I'd rather consider a capital project moving, accelerating the acquisition of a capital item rather than, and I realize it probably all equates. But I think the practice of using fund balance to fund budgetary holes is, is not a practice that I endorse.
And we voted, you know, we didn't do that last year. We, we used some one-time money but didn't want to push it. And so that would, you know, doing this with capital would be kind of more consistent with action the board's taken, with action that previous advisory committees have taken.
Do we have any sense, John or Dot, has there been any additional movement since, in your personnel, since ACES met, or since your last budget? Like, has there been any other...
You have the most updated...
We do. Okay.
We looked at it again today.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't see places where there are likely to be big swings, as we sometimes have.
Right, right. Okay.
Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but we don't see that.
So we know about all the leadings of absence?
Yep.
There's only two outstanding, and I think I know where they are now. They're not satisfied with the all, but there's always during the process, the longer we go, the more the chances something else may happen, and someone, you know, maybe will deny us stuff, you know? Or sometimes too many people take leadings of absence. And, you know, so we don't know what might happen.
And Mary, what's the timeline? Do you know when the, when the advisory committee votes? Thursday night? We need to vote, I was, the chair of the advisory committee strongly requested that we vote tonight. You know, and I would also say, you know, I think, you know, this AAA bond rating that we have and this really strong financial community, we don't forecast based on hope. You know, like, I remember, Dot, I remember a few years ago when we had a lot of movement with the out-of-district tuitions, and we were kind of wringing our hands, saying, should we budget one less tuition? And, you know, that, that, that just kind of felt risky. I don't think that's the type of community we are. And I would, you know, and I guess I don't think we have to maybe do that this year because we do have a healthy fund balance. We have some surplus for this year. And I think capital outlay could probably find projects that would get us to $133,000 that we could accelerate, that I think would, would allow closure on the budget. And, you know, I say to the school department, I think the ACES recommendation is pretty darn good. I think you're going to end up with a lot of room for additional requests, not everything. But I don't think everybody is, is getting everything in this. And I think that to the extent you have additional movement in your budget, it only creates upside. So it would, it would be my hope, you know, this is kind of the time when we all want to come together. And, you know, it's sometimes hard for this board to sort of be the first guys to put stuff on the table. But I think if, if we were going to vote in this direction, we'd hope that the, that the school committee and the school department would, would join us in this and look at the upside of the progress we're getting, as opposed to focusing on the things that weren't funded.
And so how do we, how do we take this action tonight? Do we, do we formally vote to reduce the capital budget by this amount with the, with the recommendation or the request that they find a project of equal value to accelerate? Is that...
You would use fund balance.
We would use fund balance, so...
We would reduce the capital, because the capital amount in, in the forecast is from the tax levy. So what we do, if, if you have your capital outlay, and you go to the last page, second to the last page, instead of tax levy of $2,407,751, you would take out the 133, and then you would put it under fund balance. And you would use fund balance of 133,216.
So 133... Paul, what do you think?
So even though that's coming out of, technically going to come out of FY19's balance?
You would use FY19's fund balance, yes. But it would be in FY20. You would, instead of tax levy, you would just use fund balance. It's just a different source.
But I, but my understanding was we would buy something in '19. So we're using '19 money. So why would it appear in FY20 budget?
Well, if you were going to buy it in '19, it would still come out of fund balance. It's the only place it can come out of.
Right, but why...
And you can't use fund balance without town meeting approval.
It's the, so I think what Sue is saying is, the mechanism for, for executing this idea we have, is that, is that it's, in a sense, what we're doing is we're taking FY19 dollars, the surplus of '19...
Yeah.
Is going to sit in fund balance.
Okay.
So we have to go get it from fund balance...
For FY20.
For FY20.
Even though the mechanism to, we move it on the piece of paper, but the mechanism to move the dollars is actually an acquisition in FY19? I thought that's what you were saying.
I don't remember us doing that. I remember we used one-time monies, but that goes to fund balance, and then you use it the next year. You buy it the next year. You would have to, if you can't, you can't buy capital this year without using fund balance.
If you look at your capital outlay on the forecast, I guess the way, the way I'm thinking about this, so do you see how there's capital outlay in FY19 of $2,654,62? So in my head, what I want to do is increase that by $133,000 and reduce 20 by that same amount.
But you're saying, this is the budget the town meeting approved, so we can't do it.
Okay. So the mechanism to do that is, is through fund balance.
Are you guys using the sharp pencil that the town is on your budget? It just, you know, I've been sitting here six years, and it seems like the percentage of the school department budget is, it just keeps going up. I don't know how long the town can sustain doing that. We can do all kinds of fancy maneuvers, try to make everything zero out, but I'm, you know, I'm a product of the school system, so I'm a fan of it. But I also have to pay for it year after year, and I'm extremely sensitive to the tax pressure that the town faces. I'm addressing this to the school committee. Can you step up and address some of this?
You tell them we're here, otherwise we don't, we don't feel like...
Instead of us going through these contortions, I mean, can you slice your number down to make this work? It's a three-legged race.
Right. I mean, we will, we will, we need to, we all want to be on the same page and go to, you know, have a consistent budget message from all of us. And I know you hear that a lot from schools, you know...
I'm just looking at this memo here that we got, and, I mean, it looks like the growth just keeps going up and up and up, so I'm concerned about that.
Well, I think, I mean, the cost of educating students in the 21st century does keep going up and up and up, and the burden that are facing the schools, the funding mandates that come our way, just continuing to go up and up. We need contractual obligations to our six unions. You know, we run a, we run a restaurant every day, we're educating students, we've got transportation...
You don't have cafeteria anymore?
We do, that's what I mean.
Oh, okay.
We have to feed students, we have to transport them, we have to give them the tools they need, we have to find the teachers, the custodians, the bus drivers. So the, I mean, we get it, right? But I don't know that there are many town departments whose budgets are going down because, I mean, expenses do go up each year. It doesn't cost us, you know, the cost. I mean, this town runs a tiny ship when it comes to the school department, that's a big ship. We have the lowest per pupil spending, we have the highest per pupil spending. We go, but both per pupil spending in town, the goals are twenty and hard times.
Michelle, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I think the next time we talk about per pupil spending, there needs to be an analysis of those state numbers. Because if I look at the per pupil spending just in Hingham, and I look at the enrollment in Hingham, and I look at the budget, the per pupil spending in Hingham over the last 10 years has grown by like 50%. And, and, you know, I don't know, I look at that, I look at these state numbers, and I think, you know, I just would, you know, if we're going to put numbers out there about benchmarking, I think we need to be prepared to speak to the details behind it and the understanding because I, because it doesn't, it doesn't quite jive. And I don't take away from anything, anything else you're saying, but that, that metric is a third rail, and frankly, I think it's sometimes being used as a little bit of a weapon in this town in a, in an unhelpful way. And I, I...
And I certainly didn't mean it to...
I understand that.
The issue is, it's just interesting, because very recently, we have done some digging into the numbers, like very recently, like over the past week, and how Desi calculates that number, and is it apples-to-apples comparison, is it pearson, is it apples-to-oranges? And we have some new data on that that we would love to share with you.
Sure.
I mean, tonight's not the time, but we definitely do have some, because I think that is an important number, and we need to address it, so that when we're all working together to, you know, to meet the needs of everyone in the town, we can all be speaking from the same page and all have the same factual information.
Right.
I may also add that since the recessionary years, and during that time of 2008, 2009, when the recession hit, we were opening these schools, and the override that originally was planned was cut in half, and then the budgets were restricted due to recession. And so we have not gone back and asked for an override to correct that in all these years. We've been gradually, each year, replenishing what was cut at that time. And our enrollment has continued to grow, and we've now, our enrollment is relatively stabilized, but we still have that large population bubble in the high school. And so some of these level services...
Tell me again when that peaks?
Excuse me?
Tell me again when that peaks?
That is, it's leveling off. It's, it's not peaking and going down, it's flattening out. Also, I would say that of each year, we will, we work with what we receive each year. And we've worked within that number. We haven't, once we've worked through with the advisory committee, with Board of Select and each year, we've managed what we've managed. And we educate every kid that comes in. Also, on state funding, state funding has not been keeping up with inflation, what we've been receiving from the state. That impacts all of us. Because the way our town budgets is our Chapter 70 education money goes into the total pool of the town. It doesn't come directly to the school department. And so we're all covering what state funds aren't keeping up with inflationary costs, special education costs that have grown, English language learner student costs that have grown, mandates that we've had to pay for ourselves. So I'm not making an excuse, I'm just adding explanation.
You know, the police say the same thing.
Yep.
You know, fire. Good same kind of pressures. And Tom's got the real sharp pencil out. And that's what I'm asking from the school department, the school committee.
Well, I would say that our advisory colleagues are counting on us to vote the budget tonight. And obviously, their recommendation is the one that goes into the warrant.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm sensitive to, you know, we've all been, all of us, everybody in this room and everybody in the next room have been working pretty hard the last couple months. And I would be ready to vote tonight if, if that's where both of you are.
And you're going to vote, you, are you saying you'd vote to use, you're, 133,216 of fund balance with the, with the idea that, for some reason, I...
You're uncomfortable with the mechanics?
Well, no, 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 yeah, I don't like the mechanics. I know, I know that's where we get, but I feel like we did it differently. You know, I feel like we actually bought something in that 2019, you know, in that prior year period.
I thought so too.
But, I mean, Sue's right, that you can't increase the capital number, but you can use, you could use excess, which is essentially, we're essentially doing the same thing, but the optic of moving, of using fund balance in this way just bugs me.
Yep.
Because it's not, but I, but the technique's right, right? Because you'd be using, if you bought something in 2019, it can't come out of the capital budget, because the capital budget's the capital budget. So it's got to come out of the excess that falls to the bottom line, which is fund balance.
What we're, what I think we're essentially doing is we're saying to town meeting, would you please let us take $133,000 out of this year's surplus and use it to buy something, use it to buy something before June 30th closes? And we have the money in the bank. That's, you know, I look at the surplus... we have the money in the bank. That's, you know, I look at the surplus and say, we have the money in the bank. So can we use some of that to purchase an asset? And if we purchased it before the end of the fiscal year, Sue, it would hit nineteen, correct?
Yes. And then, and then the capital budget for this year would end up being one thirty-three, two sixteen less.
And, and I think for capital outlays perspective, as long as FY twenty-one remains at two point five million and doesn't get reset in that process, you know, we're, we're fine.
Yeah, it's just got to be purchased before July.
But, so the idea, Karen, is that...
So we would vote a lower capital number with the recommendation that we find something to buy before June thirty. That's what we do.
Yeah. So, so in this capital summary, as Sue said, this two point four million would go down by one hundred thirty-three. And that line that says fund balance, we just scratch out mooring fees and it would become one thirty-three. And then when we're sitting here a year from now, this nineteen number will be one hundred thirty-three higher.
Yep.
The twenty number will be one hundred thirty-three lower.
Yep.
But there's this in-between step where that, those dollars have to appear on the fund balance line.
Yep.
Until, until that happens.
Yep. Okay. One question is, am I just being, am I just being so tortured by the optic that it's a distinction without a difference? Is that what you wanted to say to me?
So you'll, how about this? It's process.
You're not making me feel any better.
Look, I...
Look, you know, so I'm, I'm like the child of the Great Depression that walked to school both ways uphill where I just feel like...
Was it snowing?
You know, it was snowing, like all get out, no boots. I needed a lawyer, my work was limited. You know, I just don't like the idea of routinely plugging our budget gap with our fund balance, notwithstanding how healthy it is. But I, I also don't want to go through these machinations for something that just, particularly at this amount, Mary, like you're saying, if this were a bigger amount, we'd all have to back up and really sharpen our pencils. But we can do it, we can stretch it. But the, the message, I think, that we're all taking away is, number one, it's important to the town that we're all on the same page. And number two, it's important to the town that we all work hard within the financial constraints that are presented. And my, part of the reason I'm so concerned about the optic is I just, I see new growth and all growth flattening out over time. And so we're not going to have the luxury, I think, of, of this degree of flexibility on the trajectory that we, that we're looking at. And that's the concern I have about, you know, dipping into our bank account.
You know, and, and I think what, just to, you know, I said it earlier, I think we need to like share the pain and share the gain. You know, when times are tight, we all gotta, and I, I think we gotta all kind of, you know, sharing the gain. And I think everybody's got to walk away from the budget feeling like, okay, I'm, I'm a little bit better off than I was last year. And I think capital outlay looks at it and says, we have this target. And as long as we're at our target, we feel good. And I, I think for, you know, for the other operating budgets, we look and say, we'd love to be able to do what we're doing and a little bit more because we all have demands on us from all of the residents in this town. People, people come here with an expectation of service and we, we all hear and experience that in different ways. You know...
Just, I guess, you know, and then I'll be quiet. I guess, I feel like on the town side, I do, I felt like you made a cut, you've made additional cuts, and I think you presented a path to a balanced budget tonight, or reducing the budget gap tonight with the proposals that you made, on the one hand. On the other hand, some of those proposals we know are going to come due. And so it comes back to your earlier point, which is the only reason I can get over that hurdle is because of the financial position, the fortunate financial position we find ourselves in. And we find ourselves in that position because we've made a lot of hard decisions for a long time.
Yeah.
Right? Because otherwise, you can't, you can't, you can't ignore a charge you know you're going to have to pay. And, and I can get over that because I feel like we can pay that bill. But then that's, I'm done.
Yeah. I mean, I believe we got to, you know, you got, I think you got to pay your bills before you go buy new stuff. And the, the thing that makes me a little uneasy here is that, is that we're not being honest with some of our obligations. And, and at the same time, I understand in this budget process, it's some, it's some different give and take. And I don't, I don't think on a hundred and eight million dollar budget, we fall on the sword for like a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I can, I can, I can get a path to getting there. So how do we do this?
Sue and I have been listening intently and filling the blanks.
So is the...
So that represents what you just talked about, applying the ACES, the ACES cuts, the education budget, applying my cuts as outlined today, and reducing the capital by the one thirty-three...
Two sixteen.
Two sixteen.
I didn't, I thought we weren't, oh, so we're...
We're going to use fund balance.
Okay.
Oh, we're reducing the capital levy amount.
I got you. Okay. All right. That makes sense to me. All right. Do you want to look at these numbers?
No.
Okay. I move that we recommend a total FY twenty-nine school budget in the amount of fifty-four million, nine hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars.
No, that's non-school.
Says non-school budget.
And that's what you walked us through, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to recommend the education budget in the amount of fifty-four million, three hundred nineteen, eight hundred twenty-six dollars.
And that corresponds to the ACES number?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Is that a two or a Z?
That's a two.
Two, two.
Two, two, seven, four.
Okay.
The product of the keyboard generation.
Yeah. Okay. And I move to recommend the capital outlay budget in the amount of two million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Sue, you have to explain next door to the capital outlay members of advisory that we didn't cut capital. Okay?
They'll know exactly how, how we do it. We do it every year.
We're not going to have new growth revenue forever, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Right on time, right?
Sorry, Donna. You going next door now? Yes. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks, Dot. Okay.
Okay. Now we're on the Better Bus Project, MBTA.
So this is a project that came to my attention through one of our dedicated department heads who noticed it in the, some correspondence she had received forwarded it to me. I reviewed it. I was concerned with some of the recommendations. I sent it to the three of you. Individually, I've heard that there may be some concerns as well, so I wanted to, I asked the chairman to add it to the budget to, to discuss further tonight. Michelle has a lot more details and can probably run through it.
Sure. So this is one of forty-seven proposals that the MBTA is considering as part of its Better Bus Project, looking at improving bus service on sixty-three routes. This is the only one that affects Hingham. It's the Route two twenty bus, which travels from Quincy Center down three A, past the shipyard, to the Hingham Depot on Station Street. And the proposal aims to eliminate the small loop that runs through the shipyard. So the bus would still run past the shipyard, but wouldn't go through there to connect to the, to the boat, as well as eliminating the larger Hingham Center Loop, which runs past the depot, down Main Street, and back up Central Street, past this building, back to the depot. The proposal documents indicate that these changes would result in slightly faster trips and slightly shorter wait times. We're talking about, about two minutes for the majority of the users of the two twenty bus. But however, folks that who are trying to access public transportation and from the Hingham Center Loop in particular would be completely cut off and would be significantly impacted and would need to walk all the way from two stations to then catch the bus. In its analysis, the T looked at overall ridership and they weighted that at seventy percent, transit dependency, weighted that at fifteen percent, and value to the network, which means the number of people who are uniquely served, the number of jobs in other destinations on the route, and the number of transferring passengers. And they also weighted that at fifteen percent. They are accepting feedback through March thirteenth and have an online survey, survey tool on their website for that purpose. And they will bring these changes to their board next month. And if, if approved, these changes would go into effect as early as September of twenty nineteen.
Are there going to be public hearings on this?
There have been some community meetings in the last month or so. The last one that's relatively close is this Thursday night in Boston from six to eight P M. But there haven't been...
So people who rely on public transportation have to go into Boston, too?
Well, and right now, they could take the bus to the boat to get into Boston, but not after this.
Right.
That's, it's surprising to me that, you know, when the intermodal center was done, the big, the big thing was to sort of link everything and have it be a transportation hub. So it was surprising to me that, that going into the shipyard was something that was cut. It just, it seemed contrary to the discussions about the intermodal center a few years ago.
And is there any, are there any other cuts being made on the two twenty route or it's just affecting the Hingham, these Hingham locations?
It's just those two loops that we talked about.
Just to clarify, just to make sure everyone understands, so this would eliminate the bus out in front of Town Hall, that part of the route. And the other thing I would point out is, you know, in their, in their analysis, they, they talk about, you know, a couple of minutes shorter for X number of riders. But what it potentially does, and I don't know the passengers that would be cut out of this loop on a daily basis who they are, but if they're elderly, if they're infirm, what, what, what might save some seconds for other people will eliminate the option for a public, a public transit for others. So it's an all or nothing for some and a minor inconvenience for others. And, you know, to me, that's, that's telling. That's, that's...
We've also heard, you know, when, when there was discussion about potentially relocating the senior center, I seem to remember that there was discussion about the benefit of keeping the senior center on a bus line.
Yep.
And I think about the, the great analysis that Barbara Farnsworth and her team commissioned. And if you look at many of the concerns of seniors in this community, transportation is one of the high ones. And the idea that it will no longer go in front of Town Hall and stop by the senior center gives me pause. I, I get, I get that the MBTA has limited resources and they're looking at how to, system-wide, how to use the resources they have in the best manner. From a local perspective, it feels like, like we're losing something.
I would agree. And I guess I'm wondering, what's the best way to express our concern? Do we alert our state delegation? Do we, can we participate by writing a letter to the MBTA? I don't know how Paul feels about it, but I just feel like, to your point, Tom, that taking away access to public transportation just feels like we're going in the wrong direction.
I'd have to say the online survey tool is not very extensive, so I don't think that is the best way to, to provide our feedback and tell the story here.
I would suggest that you direct my office, myself, Michelle, whoever's available, to attend this public meeting. I think we should write a letter, signed by me, reflecting a vote of the Board of Selectmen at this night. If we can craft that letter, that's not done yet. I wanted to hear what your thoughts were. I have a bunch of points here I can make up, you know, I can add to the letter, you know, and it's not, it's the intermodal center, but also the shipyard build-out, by the way. I mean, we just added however many thousands of people into that facility, and now they're going to cut that portion of the loop out. Senior center question, the Town Hall question, the...
Well, it gets everybody to Quincy Center, where then, then they can, then they have a bunch of other transportation options that they don't, they don't have necessarily in Hingham.
You know, it might be a good idea if we had that letter to send it to our state senators, state reps. I believe Representative Moschino sits on the trans, on a transportation committee in the legislature. And I don't know whether, in that capacity, she would get involved in this, but perhaps in, perhaps she can advocate for us as well.
Yeah, I would recommend to go to a, as we do with some of these things, right, to a long list of people, to the MBTA's senior staff, the directors, to the Secretary of Transportation, to the, the governor, quite frankly. It should go to the Speaker de Leo. It should go to our contingency for sure, all three of them. So, yeah, there's a list.
And I, I think Mary's point is well-taken in terms of the, the state funding that went into the development of the shipyard as a transportation hub and the increase in population in the immediate shipyard, but then in the Alliance Project, you know, right across three A from access to that. So I just, I don't know. Again, I, I think, it's not like we're asking them to, the bus goes, the bus goes by. We're just asking it to...
Take a lift.
Yeah, yeah. Make a little loop and keep going.
I've taken the two twenty with regularity at one point earlier in my life. I know the drivers. In fact, I was waving to a couple of them yesterday while I was doing the driveway. There are people who use it. You know, I read the material that they put out and, you know, part of the complaint is that, you know, they can't stay on time, there's too many stops. You know, there are ways that they could address that. I've already addressed my opposition to my state representative, but I think we should do something about it. We don't have public transportation penetrating into the town center except this bus line. We have the north side, but it turns into a ghost town. It shouldn't turn into a ghost town outside of Station Street.
So it...
Yep.
So, you know, we, we just had a budget discussion on, on, you know, tight fiscal realities. And, you know, short of new growth and new large development, one thing we always need to keep an eye on, and that's economic development and the, the economic health of our business centers. And if we start eliminating public transit from that area, then Paul is absolutely right. It will become a ghost town. And that doesn't, that doesn't help the tax base. It doesn't help the commercial base. It doesn't help our business owners. That's what public transit's supposed to be.
Think about the Heritage Museum and, you know, we've, you know, a lot of people have poured a lot of effort into that. The town has stepped up with contributions. And part of it is that the hope with the Heritage Museum was that it would be a destination and it would bring people in from outside Hingham so they could come to the square, they could go to the museum, they could, you know, enjoy the restaurants, the shops. Again, people who are going to, people, people are going to use public transit. And I'd, I'd ask if, if that hearing is taking place like next week, that we would want to get that letter out so that it could, you know, get into the record and...
I may reach out to some, to Lynn Barclay as well and see if from the Downtown Association, they may want to pin one as well.
Great idea.
And if you're going to go to that hearing, I wonder if there's some sort of testimony list or something? Because if you're going to go, it'd be nice to be able to make a statement.
Yep. Last time I went to one of these, I went with Jones, so maybe the two of us will make a day of it.
Well, you're kind of busy right now, so...
True. Myself, Michelle, someone from the office will, will be able to attend.
You can take the bus.
Ride around in circles for a while. All right. Well, it's been a...
Thank you, Michelle.
Short, but productive meeting. There's nothing further on the agenda. Michelle, is there anything you'd like to add before we say goodnight?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thomas?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, so last, um, yesterday morning, we had a very heavy, unexpected storm. That was, you know, we were expecting, quite frankly, six to eight inches or less on the coast, is what we'd been told. Uh, it was the exact opposite, we got fourteen inches of very heavy snow, um, the heaviness of the snow matters, it puts a toll on the equipment and on the, the personnel that are, that are charged with moving it around, and, um, all, all, all things being said, I think the DPW did a great job keeping the streets, uh, open and safe, um, I was driving through the downtown area today, and all the sidewalks are clear, the, the, the crosswalks are open, people were using them, um, shoes might be getting wet, but, you know, such is life in March in New England, but, um, overall, I'd say they did a great job, and I wanted to call up Mike Mul, Mike Mullin of the DPW, uh, he runs that, that crew, and I thought he did a great job.
All set tonight, thanks. I just wanna remind people that this Saturday, March ninth, from one to three P M, uh, the board will be holding a public information meeting on warrant articles related to the potential acquisition of the water company, uh, that will take place here in Town Hall in Sanborn Auditorium, uh, it, it will be, uh, Harbor Media will be, uh, recording the event, uh, but we would encourage people to come out, we have a short program and plenty of opportunity for, uh, questions, so we hope to see everyone there.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, move to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Favor?
Aye. Good night.